Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to reconvene into open session, the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for August 15th, 2024, beginning at 6:41 PM. And I'd like to turn it back over to our president, Mr. Justin Chapa.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. So we're going to be doing something a little bit different tonight. Something I'd like to do this year is give our trustees a little bit more experience up here running the show. And so I'm doing what I will call gavel sharing, and our most senior trustee who's not yet had the gavel is Mr. Will Banks, so he will be running the meeting tonight as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So please, grace, as this is my first time, but thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for your participation in public education. Our meetings are open to the public. This is a meeting. We are, we do have business to conduct, so disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave the meeting or be escorted out by our security attending the meeting tonight. We welcome civic input, but insist that we remain respectful and decorous at all times, and thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Leann Haynes in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. The first item on our agenda is the Open Forum for Agenda Items. As stated in our posted agenda, members of the public who wish to address the board regarding items on this agenda are requested to register at www.aist.net. Board meetings speaker request, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Crossno, do we have any requested registered to address the board for agenda items?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I would like to recommend that the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session.
Do I have a motion? A motion by Leann Haynes, do I have a second? A second from Brooklyn Richardson, please vote. The motion passes unanimously. Dr. Smith.
Mr. Will Banks, Board of Trustees, thank you. Let's give our new assistant principals a round of applause, please. I am excited tonight to invite them up just for a brief remark or two. First one I'd like to invite up tonight is Brittany Lowe, a new assistant principal at Bowie High School. Come on up, Brittany.
President Chapa, board members, and Dr. Smith, I want to tell you thank you for the opportunity to work at Bowie High School with the students and families and staff members. I'm so grateful to work for a staff that's developing leaders. I'm thankful for Dr. Jarco, Mr. Jones, and Dr. McDonald. It's been a wonderful experience, but I'm especially excited to work with the awesome admin over at Bowie High School. Just the short time I've been there, I've learned so much from each of them, so I'm excited to be here, and I thank you for the opportunity.
And next, at Lamar High School, we have Carlin Thomas. Come on up.
All righty, good evening, everybody. President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. First off, just want to say thank you for this opportunity. Eleven years ago, I was given the opportunity to, as administrator, to serve the students at Nichols Junior High, their families, and their communities, and I've had a wonderful time with that. So thank you guys for allowing me to continue my work at Lamar. And so I do want to acknowledge my Nichols family. If it wasn't for you guys, I wouldn't be who I am today, 100%. So I appreciate everything. And so, to my new family at Lamar, I am super excited, can't wait to dive in, can't wait to get to the work. So keep my chair warm, I'll be there soon. Thank you, guys.
Also, from Lamar High School, we have Abril Jimenez. Come on up, please.
President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you for entrusting me with the opportunity to serve within an administrative capacity within Arlington ISD. This role has been a tremendous honor, and I'm genuinely excited about the journey ahead. I look forward to leading with my team as we strive to achieve our goals to support the success of every student. Now, I'd like to quickly take an opportunity to give thanks to those who have helped me throughout this journey into leadership. I'd like to thank my wonderful mother, my brother, and my beautiful yet large family out in the audience, who have been with me through every step of the way. To my best friends, I'm forever grateful for your never-ending love, support, and guidance, no matter how near or far. And I'd also like to thank Principal Maroni and Lamar's leadership team for welcoming me into their campus with open arms as we dive into this new school year. Thank you all for believing in me and pushing me to become the best leader our students deserve. I'm excited for this future journey. Thank you.
It's my understanding that our next appointment could not be here tonight, but let's please welcome Jason Colado, Assistant Principal at Sam Houston High School, by giving him a round of applause. And now for Barnett Junior High, we have Valencia Ward. Come on up, Valencia.
Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. It is an honor to be appointed as the new Assistant Principal of Barnett Junior High School. I'm happy to say that I've hit the ground running, and I look forward to supporting the vision that Mrs. Steins and the team have for the campus. It's great to live in this full-circle moment of returning to Barnett. As I've been greeted with since my return, once a bear, always a bear. So I want to sincerely thank my Barnett family for welcoming me back to campus. I wouldn't have felt as prepared for this leadership opportunity if it was not for the unwavering support and leadership of the admin team at the CTC. I'd like to personally thank Mrs. Polster, Mr. Calendar, and Mr. Moore for their mentorship, guidance, and encouragement every step of my leadership journey and to the entire CTC and Ag Science Center staff. Thank you for always encouraging and supporting me. Thank you also to the Professional Learning Department for building my capacity as a strong and confident instructional leader over the past few years. Thank you to everyone involved in the Aspire Leadership Academy for helping me to discover so much about my own leadership strengths and abilities. And lastly, I need to thank my family. I would not be standing before you today if it wasn't for their never-ending belief in me. I'd like to thank my parents, who are in the audience, because they snuck into town last night, from Mississippi, just to be here this evening, and to my brother, who is quite the secret keeper. And last, but certainly not least, to my village, but mostly to my loving husband and Sam Houston Texan, Eric, for the unwavering support and a spot that only he can hold as my biggest cheerleader. To our sons, Eric and Nick, who are both Sam Houston graduates, class of 2016 and 2020 respectively, for encouragement only they can give. There's nothing like getting encouragement, encouraging pep talks from your adult children. It's crazy hearing your own words being spoken back to you. And to our gun gator, Brooklyn, she gives the best pep talks and prayers for her mommy like no other. I'm excited for this opportunity.
And now, if everyone would please join me in welcoming our new Assistant Principal for Gunn Junior High, Mr. Rick Odom.
President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, again, I'm going to reiterate what a lot of people have said, but thank you so much for the opportunity to work with the fantastic kids of Arlington. I'm new to this community, and as you can see from my CV, I've worked around the world. And what I can say is I know what good teams look like, I know what good kids look like, and after just a couple of days on the Gunn campus, I can say we have both in abundance. And so I'm really, really looking forward to working with the team. I want to thank Dr. Varnell. I'm really looking forward to working with him and his team. I want to thank all the teachers that I've met at Gunn and all of these great administrators that I've met just tonight. I want to thank my mother, who's also here, and my children, who are my inspiration. Thank you very much again for this opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to a fantastic school year.
And now, please join me in welcoming our new Assistant Principal for Nichols Junior High, Renisha Payne.
President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you for this amazing opportunity. This is a momentous occasion for me, and I am deeply grateful for the trust and confidence that Dr. McDonald, Dr. Dalla, and my campus principal, Ms. Claiborne, have placed in me. I would like to thank my support team of family and friends that have poured into me as a leader and supported me during this process. I also want to express my gratitude to my new Mustang family. Thank you for your support and kindness as we embrace change and start to pour into our students. A special thank you to Mr. Thomas for his leadership and support during this transition. I'm excited to join Arlington ISD from Fort Worth ISD, and I will continue to let God, my passion, and my purpose lead me at the work that I will do at Nicholas Junior High. Once again, thank you for this incredible opportunity.
And last but not least this evening, please join me in welcoming our new Assistant Principal for Larson Elementary, Marlon Tatum.
President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, thank you for this incredible opportunity and for your confidence in my leadership. As I begin my journey as Assistant Principal at Larson Elementary, to my campus principal, Ms. Lotwoods, and the wonderful faculty and staff at Larson Elementary, your dedication inspires me every day. Our heartfelt thanks to my family and friends and former coworkers that are here with me tonight. And finally, to my mentor, Dr. Angela Eaton, for her unwavering support and invaluable guidance. This is truly an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees, for approving that tonight. As I mentioned last time, we are excited when we get to welcome people into the Arlington ISD family, and we're excited about the leadership this group of Assistant Principals will provide not only for our district but for our kids, and we're thankful that you've decided to join the family. So thank you, everyone.
Let's, again, welcome and congratulations to all our new appointees, and we'd like to give everyone a chance to go mingle and take photos in the foyer, and we'll join you with a 10-minute break. Are we ready to continue? All right. So next up is reports from our committees. Ms. McMurro will give a brief update on Governance Committee. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Our Governance Committee recently met last Monday, and we were able to have Dr. Wertz and Dr. Hill join our committee meeting to share a couple staff recommendations for policy updates, and those will be coming for our board's consideration in September. Our Governance Committee also will be calling for a workshop to revisit our board handbook together as a team. We believe that this will help us calibrate around our expectations and our goals as a body. In past years, we've done it, you know, kind of one at a time, and I think it'd be good for us to call a workshop and do it together. And that's our, that's our update at this time.
Next up is Finance and Academic Committee report from Ms. Richardson.
We met this last week as a committee, and Kelly Horn, our Assistant Superintendent of Facilities, reviewed the current capacity of all of our students at our local schools, which is, was incredibly fascinating to be able to see the data and the numbers behind not just what the capacity of the schools were, but the functional capacities. The current number for elementary schools, along with the projected numbers that were going to be coming through, so we were able to receive a lot of data, just about that type of information coming in. Mrs. McMurro on the committee requested that we do a Facilities Conditioning Update Index, Facilities Conditioning Index, which will review actually not just how old the school is, but what shape the schools are in, which is sometimes different than the year they were, came online. Next, we had Darla Moss, our CFO, gave us an excellent update and talked about our budget gap. We know that it's coming, we voted for this, it was not, not a surprise at all. But the discussion that we had, we really focused on what can the community do to be involved in the budget gap discussion, and especially how can we lean on FFC, our Financial Futures Committee, and what part can they have as an active role having this dialogue with us. Last but not least, we had our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Stephen Wertz. On September 5th, we're going to be doing a one-hour workshop before our board meeting. He says it's going to stay to one hour, but it'll, we'll see. One of the things that we're going to be doing in our workshop is we are going to be reviewing our accountability data, our House Three, House Bill Three goals, and our district goal planning. Fair warning, we all have pre-work coming our way, so we will be ready for our workshop and be prepared at that time.
I'm ready for homework. So, all right, thank you, Ms. Richardson. Next up, we have a 2019 bond update, Superintendent Dr. Smith.
As always, I would like to welcome Kelly Horn up to the podium to give you an update on our progress in our 2019 bond. As Kelly's walking up, I want to thank him for his continued work on all of these projects. He and I have got to spend some time together in the last few weeks, driving around, seeing some of the amazing work that our voters approved back in 2019. We're grateful for that support, but it's really exciting to see all of it in action. And when we get to visit on the first day of school and see all the eyes and the excitement about some of those projects, it's pretty special. So thank you, Kelly, for leading that work.
Members of the board, Dr. Smith, tonight you're going to see things begin to change, and this is where it gets really busy as we begin to move into Phase Four and Five. Early in bond programs, in those first three phases, you tend to do fewer projects but bigger projects. Then you get towards the last few, couple of phases, you know, and things pick up a lot. And if you remember when we were in this point in time in 2014 bond program, at one point, we had close to 150 to 160 projects going on at once. And so that's, that's kind of where we're about to begin to be pretty quick. So you'll see tonight in the program, you're going to see quite a few changes. This slide doesn't change, but again, it always sets the stage for the dollars that are in each group as we begin to look at the remaining slides. A lot's changed here, but I won't spend a lot of time on this slide other than what's what we call below the line in a bit. But on each of the slides, for each of the particular phases or groups that we're going to talk about here in a bit, you're going to see a lot of change in the dollars and what's been encumbered and expended to date and what's remaining and available. But the below the line number, our bond issuance costs have remained the same because we've not had another issuance since the last, but the interest and additional proceeds has grown considerably. We're now at about 41, almost $42 million. And so that just adds to what we hope to have at the end, which will allow us to do other things that you might like to do. So we'll talk more about that as we get closer, right? In facilities, and I'm going to start talking about Phases One through Five now, because if you'll notice in Phase Four, we've made a slight adjustment. We, we felt like it was important to make the funds available to allow the other groups in our, in our safety and security team, our transportation team, and also technology team, to be able to do what they needed to do now. And so without going out for another issuance, we took funds from the facilities portion because a lot of our work is just about to begin, and so we've moved that over and allowed those groups to, to be fully funded. So you're going to see that in the next few slides. And then the last issuance will go entirely towards facilities, but it'll come at a time when it'll be perfect, when we need those dollars to finish up all the projects. So, but what's key here, you'll notice that the largest chunk of it has been expended at this point, over 46%. Encumbered, there's 21%, and available is 14, and those are, those are of the funds that have been sold. The other 19% is that Phase Five dollar amount of 163 million and change. So we're, when we, when we have our next issuance, that, those funds will become available. And in the meantime, between now and that timeframe around the wintertime of '25, we'll begin to bring you the remaining architects for Phase Four and Phase Five. There's some changes. We're doing some things just like we did early on with buying all the playground equipment early. Because of realignment, we're going to be doing a lot of the projects ourselves in-house. We can group things together like security measures and concrete packages and landscape packages. We can group those together, hire specialized consultants for landscaping or for, for civil work and that sort of thing. Essentially, general contract that ourselves, we'll save money not having to pay certain architect firms just to do things, just to manage consultants. And we'll have large projects going out at one time on multiple campuses. We'll manage those with our project managers in-house, and that will help to extend our dollars and do more with, with what we have, like we did early on. So it's kind of a fun time, a little exciting for us, but also a little nervous. But you'll start to see the projects in Phase Four and Five move quickly out of pending or design status and into construction. Currently, we have 45 projects, but many of those projects are, are multiple school projects, so in total, it probably is more like 80 projects going on at one time. But we still have some very, very large projects, considerable projects underway. Some of you were with us earlier in the week and got a chance to walk in and take a quick sneak peek inside the new addition at Arlington High. And then, of course, you're going to see some pictures in a bit of Rodriguez Junior High, but that changes by the hour. So the pictures I have, even though they're very, very recent, if we went by today, it's probably half again more than what it is right now in the picture. But it'll still be fun to see those. Glastby and Martin are well underway. You'll see a picture of Glastby in a bit, but I'll tell you, if you've been out to Martin or you've been anywhere close, the earthwork is done, our gray beams have been poured, and it won't be long, you'll start to see red iron or steel going up for that, just like you are with Rodriguez Junior High. That's an exciting time for Martin, and it'll be a really nice addition for the new band hall. Bowie and Seguin, those two softball fields, we're going to, that's two of the projects that I mentioned minutes ago, that we're going to essentially contract ourselves with, with our civil engineers. We don't need an architect for those, for those types of facilities. We already have the facility built at Arlington High, and much like what President Chapa mentioned at our recent event relative to Wildman and Cravens being similar and almost really the same as Glastby, all the softball fields are the same. So we have that blueprint already, so we're going to accelerate those two. We've just recently sited the Bowie High School softball field. I'm going to surprise you later with where that's going to be and, and pictures, renderings of that. I think you're going to be really pleased with that. But those, we'll hopefully have those in the works through the fall and, and ready to bid, and then hopefully be able to start that work early next spring if possible. Of course, you've seen the rendering for Glastby Field, so I won't, I won't stay here long on this slide. I'll jump right to kind of where we are. This just shows a little bit of the dirt work, but like I mentioned, these, these photos change almost by the hour. And so the retainer wall, which is a massive retainer wall on the west side of that field, much of it's already started going up, and so it's what we call a big block wall, so it won't take long, you'll see that wall complete, and then that will set the stage for our concrete to be poured, formed and poured and so forth. They're working on the utilities right now, and then it won't be long, and you'll start to see, see the stadium and the buildings going up. I mentioned about Wildman Field. Obviously, you see the projects that are under construction, those have been under construction for a while, and we're in Bailey today, right? We're in Arlington High School. Some folks have asked about when we're going to have that Fine Arts and Dual Language facility open. If you remember, our goal is to have that finished in October, by late October, we'll begin moving in furniture, we'll have it ready, make sure the campus is comfortable. Principal Humble has already talked about when she's going to move her staff in prior to Christmas, and then they'll start off, just like we did the web, they'll start off the first day of the new semester in the winter. Wildman Field, the design is complete at this point, along with Cravens, and I'll talk about Cravens because it's in the next phase. But Wildman Field is, the design is complete. We've tasked the architects now with making sure their permit sets are in the city, in the city's hands, so that we can have that ready to go and, and bid early in the winter and be ready to, to take those projects and start those as soon as we are, we are, we feel comfortable that, that we have Glastby open and ready to play. The idea right now is to take Wildman, we're working with Dr. Hill on this, and his team in athletics, but to take Wildman and Cravens and have those ready to start as soon as, as soon as the fall football season is over, and then we'll kick those off together. You've seen the renderings of Arlington High, and you can see it as you drive by. I think you'll, you can tell it's really starting to look like the renderings, and so it won't be long, and they'll have the landscaping in along Park Row and Cooper. This side of the, this rendering on this side off of Park Row really looks like what you see today as you drive by. I think what's notable, and we talked about this as we walked, I lose track, it was yesterday, wasn't it? We walked yesterday, sorry. It just feels like it was a week ago. That's a stressful day for us, isn't it? Started first, first day of school. But the, the front plaza, what used to be the front door, right? It's, there's, that's going to be now the, the front door to the auditorium. So we really have a, we have a grand entrance to auditorium now, and the front door of the building is going to be off of Cooper. And so that's a, it's going to be a really exciting new addition for us. And that's just the look from the corner. We haven't quite, we haven't quite gotten to pouring the concrete out front, that'll be the last thing we do, and, and wrap up the landscape as we kind of pull out from that corner and leave the job site. It did look like this about two weeks ago when I prepared the presentation for you, but made a lot of progress. Most of the building, most of what we call the, the alucabond material or the material that, that it runs vertical along that face has been installed, and they're working quickly to finish that up. The inside looks a little bit like this. I think for those of you that were here the other day or yesterday, the other day, yesterday with us, it still looks a little bit like this, but what you're seeing now is there, it's, it hasn't left that stage of, of seeing the steel and all of that sort of thing, but they're, now they're starting to put their electrical and their plumbing and their mechanical in the walls and in the ceilings. And so as soon as all that's ready and we get inspections on that, they'll start to, to single side and double side those walls. It'll, you saw a little bit of that with the thin brick material on the inside of the building as they were starting to put finishes up, but it'll start to wrap up really quickly now. A lot of progress will go, will take place day by day. This is another look at the softball field. I bring this to you just so you, again, you have an idea of what to expect for the rest of the high schools. This is, this will be similar at Bowie and Seguin and Lamar and so forth. So this was the, this was the blueprint for what we expect to do, and I know that the folks at Arlington High love the new, their new space. A look into the renderings of Duff, and we're in at Duff, but the library is, is wrapping up now. We'll have that wrapped up in October, in, between now and the first of October, so that they can use that. They were supposed to put the HVAC unit on the roof today, so hopefully that was done, and we can start. So hopefully that was done, and we can start to make finishes on the inside of that space. The gym is in a similar state. They're, they're at the point where they're going to start putting finishes in the gym now, too. And so we hope to have this project wrapped up by the middle of October, so that the campus can go back to normal operations and we can get out of their way. That's a look at the gym from the outside. Both of these are still about a week and a half old, so they've made a lot of progress on the interior of the library already and both at the gymnasium as well. It's just a, a look at the track and the field, the new fields at Bowie and Seguin. Again, this has been done at Arlington High already. This will be done at Lamar and at Sam as well, and at Seguin, so, pardon me, Seguin has done it already. So we're very proud of those. We're doing a lot of work, in addition to this, we're doing a lot of work on their practice fields to make sure that those are playable at, at all times and that they make, they make, they meet GMAC standards for safety. A look at the Sam Houston Library on the interior. This is, again, about a week and a half old. They are making great progress on the Sam Houston roof. You approved a recent change order for us to do additional work there, and they're making good progress to bring you up to speed there. They've completed the roof decking, and they're getting ready to start bringing the, the other materials, insulation and that sort of thing in there to finish that roof up. And we do expect to finish that up in October, like we promised. A look at Bailey from the rendering that we had original. We all, many of us went to Bailey on the first day, and you got a chance to see what it looks like. And the one picture on the left is a picture of about a week and a half back. And then I asked Ryan to take a more recent picture, so you kind of have a chance to see with the landscaping wrapped up out front. And so really proud of this facility. I, I think the campus is really excited. We're not exactly finished there. We're wrapping up work in the kitchen right now, but that's not hindering Mr. Lewis. He's serving in this new serving lines. And in fact, tomorrow's Wing Day, I think, didn't you say, David? So if you want wings, go to, go to Bailey tomorrow. I was, I got the taste test today, and it was really great, so. And again, a little bit of a, a look back, it's about a week and a half old, but I promise you, it looks finished now, right? For those of you that were there, and it's great. It's a great space. And, and Ms. Fowler made note of one thing that we don't talk a lot about, but there are other things that we do in the bond that don't always get noticed. And so we talk about, it's nice to talk about playground equipment, right? And new buildings and things like that. But across the entire district, with the exception of our newest campuses, every campus in this district is receiving new cafeteria tables, one-hundred percent new cafeteria tables. So, and we've completed the elementary level, we've completed the junior high now, we're working on the high school, or those within the next week and a half, and those should be, begin arriving by mid-fall, so. In phase three, I talked about those projects, Amos and Goodman are in bidding stage, Lamar High School, we're working on that. The design was finished quite some time ago, but we're kind of refreshing that a little bit because it's been a whole, on hold a bit. But Cravens is, the design's finished on that as well, and we, we're planning to take those, those plans to the city to get those permitted, again, right along with Wildman, so that we can get that work started as soon as the next football season's completed. At Joey Rodriguez, we've seen this rendering many times. Here is kind of how it looked about a week and a half back. And I mentioned, if you drive by that today, you'll see considerably more red iron in the air. That project will, will continue to move quickly, especially when we have good, dry, hot weather like now, like we have now, we don't have to wear rain. It'll move very quickly. So there was a question about that site and, that was brought to me yesterday. We do own that, if you remember, we own that entire block. So we, we took over the entire part of it, what's on the south side of the creek and what's on the north side. The north side will kind of remain a green space. We will ultimately, we'll have that fenced in, we'll continue to, to clean that up and mow it. We'll take better care of that as we go forward. But that, that is our property. And if you remember, the city, we traded that property, we traded for that property, we gave them Roark. And so that park's moving to the Roark site just a couple of blocks away. Key Elementary, we've begun doing a lot of work there to prepare for their new gymnasium, storm shelter and renovation work. A lot of the renovation work is taking place on the inside, much so at John's. John's, a lot of renovation work is taking place there. We've done a lot of paving work at John's, but John's also gets a new gymnasium, storm shelter. So I'll bring you more of these pictures in future updates, so you can see how those are progressing. In phase four, I mentioned a minute ago that a lot of these are in planning there, and we've wrapped up, Mr. Parkes and I and other team members have wrapped up all of the considerations on these projects and in phase five that I'll show you in a bit. So these will quickly begin to move from planning over and design. For those projects that we need to bring you architects for, for your approval, we'll begin to put that together quickly. Projects like Bowie High School and Dipert, and there's others on that list, Wimbish and so forth, will, and Workman, will bring you architects, architects for approval there. On others where we can do a lot of that work ourselves, again, or with other consultants, we'll, we'll handle those and just bring you the status updates on those. We're probably, we're really excited about Dipert. We're going to bring you a recommendation for V L K again, to do that work since they did it before. But we've talked to them and working to negotiate an agreement with them right now. And hopefully, we can get that project moving very quickly and make that addition that we promised you. Phase five, I show all those as pending. We've actually started some of that work, those things that are security-related, fencing, keying and that sort of thing. But we'll start to move these over into the status of construction quickly. There's, there's, most of these will be done by the team internally and won't involve an architect for the most part. And in some cases, for example, I'll give you Ferguson, Ferguson East Education Center, that facility, most of that was just mechanical work. And so we're actually working on that now, but there's some other internal pieces that we have to do, too. Our hub participation numbers are going to start to change considerably. In fact, they've changed considerably since I printed this. I presented Dr. Smith with some information earlier today that, that showed a number that was eighty-four and eighty-four million plus in, in the volume of work that we've done with hub. But at the time that we put this together on the first of August, we were at, again, twenty-six point eight-one percent and roughly eighty-one, almost eighty-two million dollars in hub participation. And so just to remind everyone, and I know we've talked about this before, but our hub dollars are categorized out of the tier-two numbers, so that's our subcontractors. Because that's where, that's where it's really important to find hub participation. You generally don't have a lot of hub participation in your tier-one or your design and your general contract level, because most of those companies are very large and they don't, they don't classify as historically underutilized businesses. So where it's really important to make sure you get your hub numbers is at the subcontract level, and that's where we really push hard to make sure we get participation. In Fine Arts, I mentioned earlier that, that at this point, we've moved and given them all of their money, so you can see up through, they've received all their funds up through year five at this point. You get a good picture of what they've expended, what's available and what's encumbered at this point. But they, they can move forward and, and finish out their bond work at their, at their pace, and they have all their dollars available at this point. The same with safety, security and technology. Technology, we've made all that money available to them. And again, we took dollars out of the facilities pot to make them whole at this point, because we can, we can pick it up for facilities when we do the next issuance. That just gives you a good picture of where we are. They've done a great job of spending their funds at this point, so. And, and transportation was a little behind. If you remember, we had, things have shifted, have changed and shifted a lot. The, the bottom line is, is that at a time, we had to kind of stop down and wait. Bus lead, or lead time for new buses was, was very long. And so there was a period where we, where we had a shift in leadership, too. And we've also had a change, a little bit of a change in, in how we are looking at what we need in the web buses. So Dr. Hill brought information to you from member of the last meeting, and so I'm sure that they'll begin to, to ramp up and, and move forward quickly with their, their purchases moving forward. With that, I'll answer any questions you have tonight, and I hope I was quick about it, so, thank you.
Do we have any questions from trustees?
None.
Well, seeing none, I want to thank you, Mr. Horn.
Mr. Will Banks, you do have one.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't see that. Ms. McMurdo.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Thank you, Mr. Horn.
My pleasure.
For always keeping us posted with all the moving parts. I just had two very quick questions. I, can we go back to this slide with the Duff updates? And I apologize, I know that was early on in the presentation.
Do you hear that? I'm good.
And while you're mousing back, I, I want to also thank Ryan Pierce, our senior communications specialist, for always coming through with the updated bond project photos. They are awesome. And they're always really putting things, you know, into perspective, how fast everything moves. Okay, can we go to the picture of the library?
Okay, that's the interior of the library there?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, the next, the schematic.
Sure.
This might sound like a silly question, but are we going to furnish Duff Elementary with bookshelves in the library?
Yes.
Because this looks pretty fair.
Yes, they, yes, they will.
Okay.
They'll have, they'll have all, everything in there will be new, newly apportioned.
Very good.
Absolutely.
That was my only question.
Oh, that's easy. And if I could, you mentioned, Ryan, the, and I, I think I mentioned this to Dr. Collins, the entire communications team and Ryan are amazing. They support me and my team every day, and they do a phenomenal job. I don't, I don't want for anything. They always take good care of us. So thank you for recognizing Ryan's efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
My pleasure.
Excited about getting into the phase four and, and phase five projects that have been eagerly awaited, so great update.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up on our agenda is a report on district goals. Dr. Smith.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Trustees, tonight, we're going to be working through a very brief presentation, and I'm hoping to engage you in some dialogue about the development of our twenty-four, twenty-five district goals. Purpose of our report tonight is to make sure we have the continued discussion about this, these goal developments and to articulate desired outcomes from the Board of Trustees. As you all know, one of the key roles of a Board of Trustees is to set goals and vision and help us point direction for the school district. These goals help us do that. We've started by doing that in board meeting discussions over the past couple of months. I've reached out to you individually and gotten individual voice from each of you, and then I'm also talking about this, these goal development pieces with our leadership team in various ways. Just as a recap, we've been discussing this in board meetings, May, June, and August so far, and also in superintendent's reports, and you've had those opportunities to dialogue with me on a regular basis. We will talk a little bit more about leadership input moving forward a little bit later. Tonight, if you would, I'd really like to focus in on the outcomes that you all would like. Do the things that I go over this evening represent your picture of success? Is there sentiment that's missing in any of it? And do the categories and sentiments really cover the big work in your estimation of our school district over the course of the future here? And so what you can see on this slide, we had broken the goal topic areas into seven sections. And so tonight, I'll briefly walk through these. I have taken your feedback on those seven sections when I asked you what your picture of success was, and I've synthesized it into these bullet points. And so I'll explain a little bit what I did in each of these areas. And then after we're done, I'll ask you for some input, if that captures what you think overall is, was the sentiment of that area. So we'll start with academic progress. One of the things that I noted in your feedback that you've given me is that we need to be able to compare ourselves to peer groups. What are, who are our comparison districts that we want to look at, and how are we performing according to those peer groups? That there's a sentiment that we want to be able to ensure that our students are learning at the highest level possible. Now, some of you indicated level of rigor, some of you indicated meets and masters on a star test, but that whole idea of high levels of learning, we always want our students to reach the highest level possible for them. Continuous improvement and growth, the notion that I heard from you all was, we just want to be able to say that we're continuous improving every year, that we can say, we did good this year, here's how we're going to do good next year, here's how we're going to keep improving year after year, because it matters for our kids and our system, obviously. And then finally, strong sentiment from many board members about hold child measures, meaning that it's about more than just a star score. And I think Mr. Will Banks mentioned this in the last board meeting. Yes, we are going to hold ourselves accountable to star scores. It's, it's what we have in our state right now, but it's not the only measure. And so this whole idea of looking at other measures that we want to judge our educational system by is what the goal is in academic progress as well. Safety and discipline, sentiments that I heard from you all is that it's really about feedback from students, parents and staff. Do they feel safe in our schools? And that's a big deal in, in this topic, that we have proactive parent engagement in this topic and that we have continuous improvement also. That learning and accountability lens came out in your feedback to me on this one, that we learn from challenges that we may have at the school, hold ourselves accountable for constant improvement, and making sure that we're making changes on a regular basis to always benefit the safety. And again, going back to the measure potentially becoming a feeling of sentiment from our students, our staff members and our parents in the schools. Culture improvement, many of you indicated to me, we want to figure out a way to measure culture. We want to be able to say, here's what we're trying to improve, and here's how we're going to measure that. Some of that might include staff retention. That's a number that we get every year. So if we're constantly improving our staff retention rates, that might say something about culture. But others mentioned, you know, we want to be able to say, we know that we have an environment of respect and support and inclusion in students and staff in our school system, and somehow we want to be able to put some kind of quantified measure to that. Finally, that there's, there was a notion that I wanted to highlight, and I don't know the best way to say this, but that we as employees in Arlington ISD and a team of eight up here, we are all part of a bigger team in that we're all in the same journey together. It is not just based on individual departments, individual schools working as silos. So that it's looking at our schools and our districts working in unison together for big goals. That idea of teammates versus, oh, I just do this over here, and I, I'm not involved in the work that's over here. So de-silouing a system and really trying to get a sentiment of teamwork throughout our district. Finally, on this slide, in the student experiences, I thought this was a great one, and heard that we really want to be able to, to show that there's joy in school, that our students love learning again, and that they have an opportunity to learn at the higher levels, and it's rigorous and relevant, but there's also joy in learning, that they're excited to come to school. That learning and the student experiences are personalized, sometimes based on interests that the students have, but often based on the needs that the students have, too, that it's not just one-size-fits-all approach in Arlington. And we've done a great job of that, of providing personalized pathways in the past, but that we want to continue to do that and ensure that the supports are there for every student to succeed. Real-world interdisciplinary opportunities, so it goes beyond the classroom learning experience, and I think we see evidence in our system and pockets of that throughout our district. But that notion that students actually have the ability to learn in the community, learn from real-world experiences and getting involved in organizations or employment opportunities out there. I don't know what that noise is either. I was, I thought maybe you all knew. Yeah. There's something like coming down over my head right now. It sounds like a drone, so. And then finally, that last one, elimination of fear in the learning experience in what, there's a notion of being able to fail forward that I think is important. That notion that when you learn, when a student is learning, there is going to be failure along the way, and to not have any kind of fear of that in our system. A student needs to be able to make mistakes in the learning process and learn from those mistakes. And the fear of learning or the fear involves, has to be eliminated in some way, shape or form. We want our students to be able to learn and grow and experience those challenges along the way, because some of the lessons are hard along the way, and we want to be able to experience that. On the next slide, we have the final three categories. Those were professional learning, marketing and engagement. In professional learning, that idea that professional learning that we provide for our system is targeted for the needs of our staff, that we constantly use professional learning environments that model effective instruction. So if we want to see great instruction in our classrooms, we actually have the ability to see great learning experiences for our teachers and staff. Do y'all want me to take a break while we're hearing that noise? Are y'all good? Okay. Sounds good. That we have peer opportunities, meaning that staff members across our district have the opportunity to present and learn from each other in various settings, which a lot of that happens on a regular basis now, but expanding upon that. And then that professional learning should always be personalized by the individual or the group that they work for, but it also needs to be goal-oriented. We're actually investing in the professional in our system to help them learn and grow to better our organization. Marketing, that idea of continued focus on unique offerings that are publicized throughout our community, that we have inside and outside the district efforts, and I thought one of the pieces of feedback that I heard in this area was really important, and that was, marketing isn't just for the parents of the school district, it's actually for multiple stakeholder groups in our school district too. We have a retired community in our district that we need to be able to, maybe marketing isn't the right word, but communicate the progress of our school district to other stakeholder groups other than targeted to our parents. That sometimes, sometime soon, it might be an opportunity for us to rebrand ourselves, that we've had a good branding in Arlington ISD for a number of years, but that we might get an opportunity to, maybe after the strategic planning process in the next year, to rebrand ourselves and remarket ourselves again. And then finally, really honing in on celebrating the story of our school district and making sure that there's a clear message in the story we're trying to tell our community, and that our community is able to hear that well. Finally, in your feedback that I've heard on these goal topic areas, in engagement, is that as we work to engage our community, it's important to not just rely on some, but to try and engage the voices of all. And that might mean that we bring the community in, in some cases, and other times, we go to meet the community in some cases. So, thinking about events that we have for parents, maybe sometimes we hold them at schools rather than at the PDC, that sometimes we might vary the timing up. Instead of having them at 6:00 PM, we realize sometimes a Saturday morning might be better for some of those parents. So, just really looking at our opportunities to engage parents in different ways, but that it's also, and down there you see the bottom bullet, support for our diverse community, that we're recognizing that we are a multilingual, multicultural school district, and that a one-size-fits-all approach to some of those engagement opportunities has to be varied according to the need of our community. And so, I think you and I talked a few months ago about what that might look like, and that is, potentially, if you're talking about developing a strategic plan and you're targeting a certain portion of your community, you hold the meeting in Spanish and not English, so that the translation is done for the English-speaking people in the audience and not the Spanish-speaking people. So, just to be able to talk about what support might look like for a diverse community could vary with that. And so, overall, again, these bullets were sentiments that I gathered from feedback and talking to you and engaging in this dialogue over the past three months. And so, tonight, what I would ask you to do is, going back to those questions that I publicized first, or I publicized, that I showed you first, do those things represent your picture of success? If we do those things, do you feel like, hey, we're doing what we need to do as Arlington ISD? Is there any significant sentiment in those areas missing that you could see that I didn't cover? And does this adequately cover the big work that we have in front of us as a school district? And so, at this time, if you don't mind, I'd open it up to you all for some discussion and feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I just want to make sure that in doing all of this, we're bringing in all the stakeholders, that we're asking our teachers, what does the picture of success look like for you? Asking our community members, what does it look like for you? Even the students, bringing them in and asking, what does success look like to you? So, I just want to make sure that all the different parties are going to be involved, not just, you know, questions that we've had or discussions that we've had, because I think the stakeholders on all different levels, we need to make sure that we're all getting the same picture of success and bringing all those parties into it.
So, as I, can I ask a clarifying question on that? So, as we establish these goals, and I would land that in the engagement category, and when we talk about engaging the diverse community, whatever we're working on, your hope is that we ensure we're reaching out to all the stakeholder groups to gather that information?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Absolutely. Parents, teachers, principals, admin, and the community.
Great.
Community needs to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Ms. McWhorter.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I think this is a great snapshot, at least as a good starting point for our picture of success. I want to thank you, Dr. Smith, for, you know, you set out to, you know, the first semester-ish of your superintendency, you set out to listen and learn, and I think that that is something that we really want to do as a continued goal, is amplify voices around our district. As Ms. Fowler mentioned, we want to make sure that everyone has a voice, and just looking at this picture of success, and it was seven goals, or seven categories so far that we've outlined, it makes me so excited. I shared with our governance committee recently that I've just been having a hard time sleeping. I'm so excited because we have so much great work ahead of us, and I just want to thank you personally and publicly, Dr. Smith, because you are the right leader to take us through this new day, and I also want to commend my colleagues because I truly believe that we are the right board. So, thank you all.
Any other questions? Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I've been looking at this, and sometimes I, you know, we're talking about goals, and I'm not exactly the most abstract thing, you know, sometimes more concrete, and so when I see these, I'm already thinking about like concrete things that I would want to see done to fall under them, and so I struggle with that. But I think that this is, this is the frame, within this framework, just about everything that I think could be a strategic or even tactical priority for the district going forward fits broadly within most of these goals. The only suggestion that I have, and I think that this is something probably on the bubble of whether or not it goes too far down into, you know, a layer down of where this is, is under the culture of improvement, something that we have done a very, made a priority for a long time, that is something we've used as both a staff retention but also a culture improvement tool, is the competitiveness of our compensation, and I wonder if that is worth its own bullet point, because that is something that can be a goal, that is also, there are metrics out there that we can compare within the marketplace to see where we're at on that, and we have been, that has been an aspect and a goal of success for us for a long time, and so I wonder if there might be some consideration to adding that as a bullet point under culture of improvement. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. Haynes.
Yes. So, I'm excited about these, first of all. I see a lot of the feedback I gave on there, and it's exciting, great things. But it leads me to my next question of, and you might be going over this in the next steps. So, it says that your team will draft the goals. Will they remain, is the intent for them to remain in bullet-pointed appeal, like you're going to state it that way? It says that you're looking at prioritizing them. I'm concerned about how we prioritize some of these over the others, because some of them you have to have in place to get to the others. I'm just, I guess I'm overwhelmed with what, how we take this and break it down to the next steps.
You're leading me into the next part.
Okay, perfect. Okay, because I'm having some anxiety over that.
So, based on your discussion tonight and your feedback that you have given me, it's our administrative team's job to now draft that into big, broad, overarching language. What do we really want this to be in a statement in this area? Okay? And we have seven categories that we'll work on, and we'll be bringing those back to you. The next part of that is asking the trustees to think about, what's our priority, though? Because pretty much any literature that you read on organizational improvement says that if you try and do everything, you won't improve anything. And we need to be able to have the conversation as a team of eight of, what is our priority? And it might be over a year, or two years, or three years, but we do need to be able to hone in and say, what are our priorities? And then our staff, that's when we would take a look at this, after the board actually adopts the goals that you feel comfortable with, our staff then develops a key progress measure, and what that progress measure is, is a, as Justin was mentioning, a very specific target for the next year. And it's our job to get the direction from the Board of Trustees. You help set the direction for the school district, and then it's our job as staff to help make the plans to realize that. And so, over the course of the year, we would say, this is what we believe is the most important work, the highest leverage strategy that we could do. Here's how we would measure its success over the year, and board, do you feel comfortable with that? And then we'd ask the board to adopt those key progress measures, and in essence, those would be the goals that you would evaluate me on as well, along with the state mandated STAR test scores, et cetera. So, it gives us an opportunity to say, the board set these, this direction for our district over the course of the year, and you agree that this is the most important work that we can do, and so then, at that point, it's our job to help make that work happen. And then that's what we talk about in our board meetings, that's what we report out on. But the challenge with that always is, going back to that, what Leanne just mentioned a few minutes ago, is the narrowing of priorities and focus. Because again, if we keep adding on and keep adding on, what we realize at the end is, at the end of the year, you find out that you haven't been able to accomplish anything. So, that's the next step in the process, and we'll be, we'll be coming back to you with more information.
Ms. Haynes.
Sorry, I have a follow-up to that then. So, then is it realistic to assume that all of the bullet points that were there will not make it into, like, because we're going to have to prioritize, so some of those are going to fall off for other years' goals?
It's our job to craft the sentiment around it, and then say, what would be our recommendation as an administrative team to take that first step?
Okay.
And it'll come back to you all for discussion, and you'll be able to weigh in. But again, I think it's important for us as an organization to realize, if we had seven bullets under seven things, we're measuring 49 things that might not get done in the course of a year, and we've got to really figure out how to hone that in so that we're holding ourselves accountable to the progress that we need to pay.
Yeah, we got to keep the main thing the main thing, right? I know, that's a trigger phrase, so. No, any other questions, Ms. Richardson?
When we were showing our different lanes that we're going to look at, and when we go back to the culture of improvement, I love seeing this on here, because that's what we've talked about, because for so long, we've been a data-driven instruction group. Like, we have only known that lane, and we can talk about culture all the time, but until we put the metrics to it, what do you say? I want to be very careful as a board that I can think I know what culture should look like, but I'm not an employee of this district, and I am not on a campus every day, and I need to make sure that I'm not dictating a culture that I am truly not involved in, and that we are listening to the people on the campuses and in our staffing, our admin building that say, no, this is what we want. Yes, we can set goals and say we want culture improvement, we want culture to be just as important as our data, but what does that culture, what does that word actually mean? And I just need us to put something behind that, and it not being us creating something that we don't truly know.
I think you, I think that's extremely astute, because I think we have to be always careful and realize that there is a culture at every campus, whether we say so or not. Culture is the way we do business in between the gaps sometimes. Daniel Coyle, he's the author of The Culture Code, I saw a video and shared it not too long ago, talked about culture being like a flock of birds flying through a forest, and they fly through, and they have to communicate and navigate and work together in between, navigating all those things, and culture is how they do that. It's the interaction in between those obstacles along the way. I think there's ways for us to clearly articulate pieces of a culture that we want people to feel throughout every campus without being prescriptive in what every campus has to do. And I think those are important distinctions that we need to make. A phrase that we use often right now is, how we do business is just as important as what we do. And I think, I believe that's really important, that as we're working with people, as we're talking with people, as we're experiencing student learning in the classroom, you all know that a teacher can have great content knowledge, and if they don't work with a student well, that learning doesn't take place. That is the same organizationally as well, and we, in order for us to improve, it's got to be a both-and. And so, I think, I think there's ways we can clearly identify some things that we want to see in district-wide culture to help us improve as a whole system without being too prescriptive.
Okay. I often think of it, it's like, if you are a cook in a kitchen, and if I come in and tell you how to cook, that's not fair to you. That's not my place to go in and tell you how to run your restaurant. So...
That's just me, because I need help.
We all need help now. But the other part of that is, when we're looking at this, because I am excited for this, when you started asking us to fill out these surveys and what did it mean, and then when you would come back and show us our results, and so often, things that we had, I had written down, somebody else had, and you, we were able to see each other's responses, it was nice to see that we had very similar thoughts. Because of that excitement, how soon do you see this plan progressing?
We're going to push. We're going to try and make sure this, we land on some district goals and key progress measures in the next month or so.
Okay.
It's important for us as a system, because ultimately, you as a Board of Trustees helped set direction for us for the school year, and if we want to see these things happen, we've got to land on what that is, and so there's going to be more work for you all. When I ask you to actually think about the prioritization, I really mean it, like, and that's going to be probably the hardest piece of this, is to say, all of those things that you shared in your sentiments matter, but what can we realistically, and what should we realistically accomplish over the next year? Just to be real specific about it, and we've got to get to that somehow, because that's where a board and an administration, an administrative team can be unified, so that when June hits, we're all on the same page with, here's what we wanted to do, and what our report out on is, here's how we progressed. We hit this mark, we were a little short here, so let's talk about it, why were we short here? And just have that constant dialogue, and that's the essence of continuous improvement.
As long as there's action with our dialogue, I'm excited.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. To kind of piggyback on what Ms. Haynes was talking about, I think if we look at those seven categories, and then you look at the bullet points, I think you can kind of synthesize them and see that we don't have to have all those bullets, they kind of are saying the same thing in maybe just a little bit different way. So, I think if we think of it like that, of seven categories, and then the sentiment behind those categories, it helps me kind of see it a little bit better. And again, like Ms. Richardson was saying, the culture, not only the culture of the school, but the culture of that community needs to be taken into account, because the people that live in those communities know what the culture is, and that comes into the different schools. So, I think we have to be very careful and make sure that we listen to all voices when we're going in that direction.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any more questions from my fellow trustees? Seeing none, I do want to say, I also want to commend you, Dr. Smith. I also am very excited about moving forward on this. It's been a while since we've really sat down and really thought long and hard as a governing body, as a team of eight, on these things, and I can't think of nothing more important for a board than this work. And we are putting in the right governance frameworks, we're doing the hard work, a lot of exciting work. We've got a great new superintendent, so I'm really excited for the future of Arlington ISD. And I do want to do a shout-out to my fellow colleagues. I think, I always say this, I know it's a cliche now, we're like the Avengers. We are, we all have our superpowers, and we all bring them to the table with our unique perspectives, and then that collective vision is so well-thought-out in the end, and I think the list that you presented is representative of that. And so, thank you, colleagues. I'm liking what I see up there. I didn't mean to use the trigger phrase, the main thing is the main thing, but we do have to, we do have some tough work. We've got to prioritize, we've got district goals that we have to adopt for our district improvement plans, and so hopefully, I get why Dr. Smith feels the need to accelerate here, because we've got some tight deadlines. That doesn't mean that when we look at the broader picture in our upcoming strategic plan, that we can't shift, but we do have to make some tough choices and get the prioritization right to match the needs and the unique challenges that we face as a district today. So, thank you. All right. Anything else on that topic, Dr. Smith?
No, sir. Thank you, board, for your great dialogue and discussion there. We appreciate it. We're going to take that information and go from there.
Next up on our agenda are action items. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, tonight, we... Trustees, tonight we have Ms. Darla Moss here, and Darla's gonna come on up, give you a very brief presentation on the attendance credit option that we would like to pursue, and she'll, she'll give you the details on this for our excess local revenue discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, President Chapa, Mr. Will Banks, trustees. As Dr. Smith said, I have a really brief presentation, it'll be familiar to most of you, we did this last year, a couple of years ago, we were, we actually self-identified as recapture, and then in 2223, we received information from TEA showing us as, as a recapture district. So just going to show a brief, a couple of brief slides on our recapture status. Districts that are subject to recapture, of course, are required by statute to send a portion of their locally collected property taxes to the state. Recapture was created back in 1993 to make school funding more equitable between districts. And then in 2019, with House Bill Three, the intent was to decrease the burden of recapture. Some districts did see recapture eliminated, some saw recapture reduced, and then others saw an increase in recapture. As I said, we self-identified in 2022 and budgeted accordingly, and we received an official letter from TEA in 2023, and again in July of 2024. So this is just our timeline, on the fifteenth, as I said, we received that letter, on September first, 2024, is the deadline for the district to submit the district intent choice selection, and to submit the signed contract electronically. January fifteenth, we submit information on our county appraisal cost to the TEA, and on, by September of 2025, is when the excess local revenue will be netted out of Chapter Forty-eight funding that we receive from the state. So the district has five options, and we talked about this last year as well. Option one, we can consolidate with another district. Option two, we can detach, the detachment of property. Option four, contract education, to educate non-resident students. And option five, the tax-based consolidation with another district. The administration is recommending, again, that we choose option three. Option three, netting that Chapter Forty-eight funding allows the district to offset the reduction of excess local revenue against our Chapter Forty-eight funding that we receive from the state. And so again, administration recommends approval of the agreement of the purchase of attendance credits and the delegation of the authority to obligate the school district under Chapter Forty-nine to the superintendent. Glad to answer any questions.
Trustees, do we have any questions? Ms., Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Moss, maybe I'm totally off, but there's something that has bothered me for a long time. So the state is saying that we are property-rich, and so the money that we make, they take more of it and give us less. But yet, our district, if my number's correct, is seventy-three percent economically disadvantaged. So it, to me, I don't understand, we have such a need in this district to help our families and help our students, but yet the state says, no, Arlington makes a lot of money, so we're gonna take more and give you less for you to use in your schools. There's such a disconnect there, and I, I just don't understand why they take more money when we can prove that we need the money. I mean, what, can you give me some kind of an explanation? Am I, am I off on my thinking?
Uh, no, and I will tell you that each district is different, correct? And so the, what recapture intended to do, as, as I said earlier, is to say, okay, we have local tax dollars that we are, are, are collecting locally. And so, for instance, they often use the glass, right? The state says every district gets X amount of dollars. Some of it, uh, some of it comes from local funds, and some of it comes from the state. We start that glass with what we get locally, and then the state is saying, we're only gonna give you enough to meet what we say you should have. And so if our local amount fills the glass, then the state gives us nothing. So we have to stay within what our allotment should be, or what the state says our allotment should be. And I think we've talked about this in the past, where there are, you know, districts that have, like you said, the economically disadvantaged, that's more of a, a challenge for us in educating those students. That's not what recapture looks at, it's basically looking at, what is the allotment for a school district, and are they making more money locally? Are they collecting more taxes? And if they are, then the state is not going to give them as much money as they would. We, they recapture that money, they put it in the state pot, and the intent is to put it back into the FSP, um, the fund, foundation fund for other school districts. That includes charter districts as well, so there are property poor districts out there who do need, need some of that, that funding, but with recapture, we're, we're spending, or the state is receiving over three billion dollars in recapture now, over almost three hundred districts are actually paying in recapture now. So, again, as I mentioned about House Bill Three, and the intent was to try to reduce that, but it has not done that for a lot of districts.
Well, I guess this sounds selfish, but our city works so hard to bring in new business, and so we can, our economy can thrive, but yet, to me, we're almost like we're being punished, because we have a lot of money, so they make us give it back. And I, I don't know, I just don't understand that. I feel like our city works so hard to bring in the tax dollars, and then to me, it's almost like we're kind of punished for it. And I just, it bothers me that the state looks at it that way, and that we don't get more, that they take more. It's a very flawed system. Thank you, Ms. Moss.
Any more questions from trustees? Ms. McMorro?
If there are no more questions, I have a motion, would now be a good time. Okay. I move for the 2024, 2025 school year, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that we delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, Section eleven dot one-five-one-one C four, to the superintendent, solely for the purpose of obligating the district under Texas Education Code, Section forty-eight point two-five-seven, and Texas Education Code, Chapter Forty-nine, Subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education as authorized under TEC forty-nine point zero-zero-six. This includes approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit, netting Chapter Forty-eight funding.
I have a motion by Ms. McMorro, do I have a second? And I have a second by Ms. Fowler, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next up, Action Item B. Consider and adopt a resolution directing the defeasance and/or redemption of certain Arlington independent school districts' outstanding unlimited tax bonds and one or more, um, on one or more occasions, and appointing and authorizing an officer to delegate the authorized officer, or the authority to make all determinations required, to effectuate such defeasance and/or redemption, and enacting other provisions related to the subject. Dr. Smith?
I'll just turn it back over to Ms. Moss, I don't want to read that again, so I, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Moss, and George, George is here, awesome, we'll, we'll let them take it away.
Awesome, thank you. So as you said, we have George Williford, he's the Managing Director for Hilltop Securities with us this evening. Again, Hilltop Securities represents the district as our financial advisors for bond work, they work closely with our finance and facilities team as well, on bond sales, on bond redemptions and refunding. They also assist in projecting values and modeling out our INS tax rate. So we are presenting a resolution to you tonight for your consideration, directing the defeasance and/or redemption of certain outstanding unlimited tax bonds. The resolution authorizes the CFO and the Assistant Superintendent to work with the Hilltop team to evaluate and make determinations regarding bond defeasance, when those opportunities are available. As in the past, once we identify those opportunities, we'll come back to the board for the approval of any defeasance or redemption before we move forward. Paying off this debt early allows us to save taxpayers significant interest dollars. By retiring the debt before maturity, we avoid future interest payments. Since 2021, we have saved forty-nine and a half million dollars in interest through refunding and cash redemption and defeasance for our community. So Mr. Williford is here, I'm going to have him come up, and he will explain to you where we are, and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Darla, President Chapa, Mr. Will Banks, and Dr. Smith, members of the Board. It's good to be back. As Darla indicated, what you have before you is a resolution prepared by McCall Park Hurston Horton, who is Bond Counsel for the district, and it's similar to action that's been done, I believe, the last three years. And nothing specific will happen from, if, passage of that resolution tonight. What that does, like Darla indicated, is delegate to the CFO and Assistant Superintendent the ability to identify and make a decision about the use of excess monies that might be in existence. And in reality, that won't really be known until full tax collections are in, and then, as this year, Darla and Carla identified, here is the debt service that's scheduled, here's the dollars that we have, and what might be truly excess above a desired level to maintain, and so on. And as an example, in June, so really just a couple of months ago, they had worked, and Carla identified that there's fourteen million dollars, so you did a, a defeasance at that point with those monies. So something similar may occur this spring or summer. And as Darla just indicated, that defeasance alone saved eight point nine million of future interest costs. And then, since 2022, not counting the bond refundings, but just the cash redemptions and defeasance, including that, when you've saved ten point seven million of future interest costs. So anytime that there's excess INS funds, it's advisable, and a good opportunity to apply those to redeem or defuse debt. Just to let you know, and we were talking about this a little earlier, you have a lot kind of on the plate or available, because this February, the Series two thousand fifteen, sixteen A and sixteen B all become callable, and in that case, you can just outright redeem bonds when February rolls around. And between those three issues, there's two hundred and seven million dollars of principal that's callable. Then in two thousand, I mean, two thousand twenty-six, the call date on the Series seventeen, and that's another sixty point nine million of principal that's out there, and a target for redemption or defeasance. But with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Trustees, are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion? Ms. Richardson?
I move for the approval of the resolution directing the defeasance and/or redemption of certain Arlington independent school districts' outstanding unlimited tax bonds on one or more occasions, appointing an authorized officer, and delegating to the authorized officer the authority to make all determinations required to effectuate such defeasance and/or redemption, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
I have a motion from Ms. Richardson, do I have a second? And a second from Ms. McMorro, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Action Item C. Dr. Smith?
I apologize, I didn't have my, my notebook open here. Action Item C is for the Board to consider approval of mediator's proposal for settlement in Cause Number zero-nine-six-three-two-one-six-one-eight-zero-dash-two-one.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I move to authorize the superintendent to take the necessary actions to resolve Cause Number zero-nine-six-three-two-six-one-eight-zero-twenty-one.
Thank you, I have a motion for Ms. Fowler, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second for Mr. Chapa, any discussion? I'd love to do unanimous consent on this, but I'm told we have to vote, so please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. That brings us to our consent agenda, we will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests to pull, pull items from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion? A motion from Ms. Richardson, do I have a second? And a second from Ms. Fowler, please vote. Consent agenda passes unanimously, thank you. We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Costno, do we have any requesters registered to address the Board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, sir, we do, we have two.
Thank you. Welcome. This second open forum segment for the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and the trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have three minutes to speak, Ms. Crossno will notify you when your time is up, and at that time, please end your presentation. First up, I have Saied, Saida? Thank you, Ms. Saida, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President and trustees, to give me opportunity and talk, Saieda Saied, sixty-seven oh five Sapphire Circle, North Colleyville. I'm here to represent myself, to be a nominee for upcoming TAD Board Appointed Position, and this is the first ISD that I'm speaking, because it's the second largest in Tarrant County. Some people knew about me from the last municipal election, but by profession, I'm a mechanical engineer, I have a master's degree in mechanical engineering, almost seventeen-year resident of Tarrant County, live in different cities like Bedford, Forward, and finally, almost eleven years living in Colleyville. And it's, I just heard that Arlington ISD is seventy-three percent economically disadvantaged, kids are here, it is so difficult to absorb those information. I understand the hardship that's, that the district are facing because of recapture, Robin Hood, and all those. I live in GCI ISD, and I can understand, there's spending like sixty-four million dollars in recapture. Last year, they sent forty-three million dollars. But I'm the volunteer for the, my city for several years, I was the president- I was appraisal review board member back in 2019, 2020, and when I was there, I was the youngest among all. And believe me, I'm still the youngest among them. I was 38 at that time, when I was appointed in 2018. So this time, I'm running for TAD Board, for the appointed position, and I would like to mention some deadlines. September is the actual, the month of nominate until October 15, and taxing entities have 5,000 votes. Arlington ISD has 453 votes. Ballot are assembled by the chief appraiser and sent it to the taxing entities by October 30. And all votes must be by resolution. It should be on the agenda and a public hearing. And the resolution must be submitted to the appraisal district by December 14. And I will encourage board to please vote for every candidate. This way, you have the right to recall that candidate if they are not following Texas Property Tax Code. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saeda. Next up, we have Mr. Jarvis. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board of trustees. My name is David Jarvis, phone number 817-991-7153. I'm here to basically alert the board to a situation recently. On July 9, I filed a grievance, and Mr. Cale told me he would not process the grievance that was filed on July 8. I said, why not? And he says, well, we're just not going to process it. And I said, tell me what part of your grievance policy gives you the authority and the power to simply say, we're not going to process this grievance, because I can't find it in there. After that, I talked to Mr. Cale and General Counsel, Mr. Eichelbaum, Dennis Eichelbaum, asked him the same question. Again, this is just communication. Tell me what legal authority AISD has to stop a citizen from using the grievance process. I got no answer from Mr. Eichelbaum. I got no answer from Mr. Cale. I cannot find it anywhere in the grievance policies. As a matter of fact, page one of the grievance policy, and I quote, "Complaints by members of the public shall be filed." This district is refusing to file my grievances. When I walk up to the HR and I say, here it is, they receive it, they mark it, and I say, well, when are you going to set up for a Level One hearing? Well, we're not going to process it. We're just going to receive it. That is a denying, denial of my process, my access to the grievance process. That's against the law. It's against your own grievance policy. But also, on July 11, I sent an email to Mr. Eichelbaum and informed him of his decision to basically stop me from using the grievance process was causing the board to commit ongoing violations of the Texas Education Code, Section 11 point 1511b13. As you, I'm sure, know, every member of the board is required by state law to provide every member of the community with a right to obtain a hearing before both the administrators and the board. By this district, through your attorney and Mr. Cale, and of course, I sent an email to you on July 11, to every, every one of you, informing you that the board's refusal to intervene is making the board actively complicit in a violation of the state law that is cited. You state, and again, if somebody would just communicate, not you, I know you're not going to communicate with the citizen, I get that, but if someone, the superintendent, the attorney, Mr. Cale, you pick somebody to say, okay, tell Jarvis why we're going to shut him down and deny him access to the grievance policy, even though it appears to be a violation of state law, you need to tell this guy because he just doesn't understand. But I get crickets. You know, the board on your website claimed to be guardians of the public trust, but how can parents and taxpayers have trust in this board and your attorney when there's no communication? There's no, there's no communication. I mean, I could be wrong. Why can't Mr. Eichelbaum or Mr. Cale just tell me how I'm wrong? Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis.
Trustees, it's my opportunity now to share some exciting news that's happened for our district in our superintendent's report this month. We have officially wrapped up our 22-23, or excuse me, 23-24 school year in a great way last week with our summer graduations. There's nothing better than seeing the smiling faces of our students, families, and staff members who have poured so much into helping the students reach that milestone. We were able to honor the more than 125 graduates from seven campuses last week. Thanks to everyone for their hard work in making that event such a success. And while I'm talking about successful events, I want to thank everyone for their hard work at our 10th Annual Back-to-School Kickoff at AT&amp;T Stadium. It was great seeing you all there. It was my first experience in a kickoff, and it was an outstanding day. We were able to set it, this, excuse me, we were able to set thousands of students up for success this school year by providing them with backpacks filled with school supplies, haircuts from our own Dan Diaper, CTC, cosmetology students, dental and vision screenings, as well as opportunities at our resource fair. We had more than 800 volunteers on hand and great sponsors that made it happen, and you all saw hundreds and thousands of smiling faces. Another first for me last week was the chance to speak at our Greater Arlington Chamber of Commerce State of the District. I was happy to be able to meet some new faces in our business community and get a chance to talk about the great things we've done and the great things we have coming up in our school district. And yesterday was, I should say, and thanks to President Chapa for jumping in as well and presenting that day as well. And yesterday was an awesome first day as we finally got to kick off the 24-25 school year. I started my day at Martin High School as the district welcomed CBS 11's morning team to our school. Then I got to greet students at Pope Elementary as they started their day. I also visited Arlington High, Bailey Junior High, and was planned to visit Cooking Elementary in the pre-K program, but we had to postpone that one for a future date. It was great to see so many students and staff members excited about the school year. It's further proof of the outstanding culture we have in Arlington ISD and the great work that we can continue to build on. That concludes my superintendent's report this month.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Trustees, are there any trustee reports? Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. I want to take this opportunity to commend our mayor, Jim Ross. About a year and a half ago, he started a Mayor's Education Coalition, and he pulled in AISD, ABU, UTA, lots of different charter schools and private schools, because he wanted to get a pulse for the education in the area. And then in the spring, the coalition was approached by the Sid Richardson Foundation and the Mills Foundation with an idea to bring in all the surrounding communities. And what they wanted to do was to set up a portal for parents where the parents could go and find resources, not only educationally, but fun things that were going on in the area. And so the focus was kind of on, on resources that would help parents better understand STAR and the scores and the gaps in their children's learning. But since that time, we realized that we don't really want to focus on STAR and the gaps in learning. So under the chairing by Dr. Victoria Farar Myers, and she asked me to co-chair, we're now moving more towards finding ways that our parents can be more involved in their students' education. So what we're going to do is, we're now focusing on joining forces with all education entities in Arlington and around Arlington. We're going to create a collaborative effect, collaborative efforts for school safety, to increase parent engagement, and by doing so, we know that this is going to strengthen our community, and that will be good for the city because we'll be able to attract more employers and better wages for our students. So I'm really excited to be part of this coalition with Dr. Victoria Farar Myers. But I just want to thank our mayor for starting this coalition and knowing that we need a partnership with education and the city, and I'm just really pleased at the work that our mayor has done for that coalition, and I'm proud to be a part of it. And I will bring you more information as we go along. But the Mayor's Education Coalition is really a good start to bring the city and the education facilities together. Thank you. And then I have one more thing. I'm pleased to report that I've been selected to serve in Leadership Tasby, and that's the Texas Association of School Boards. And it's a year commitment, and I know it's going to be a lot of work, but I'm looking forward to it, and hopefully, it will make me a better trustee and board member, and I'll bring all my learning back and share it with everyone. So thank you. Thank you. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler, and congratulations on Leadership Tasby. Ms. Richardson?
Hi. Last week, I had the chance to go over to the PDC Center and was able to meet Dr. Orsini and her Early Learning Team. They were doing their pre-K kickoff and show, getting to have all the teachers come. They had a neon theme. They were so bright in their smiling faces. They were having a great time, but it was great to get to meet them. They were kicking off their professional learning for the year. But also, one of the big things that we need to be aware of is it's free. Free pre-K. She was making sure all the teachers were aware. Share this with your parents.
Wait, say that one more time, Ms. Richardson. It's what?
David, I know you have a birthday coming up, and you may be a little bit older, but it's free. We have free pre-K. But I also had the chance to go over at that same time. Our area, our AISD speech directors were there, and so we're able to go over there and meet our speech therapy directors and just tell them, thank you on behalf of the board for all that they do, the way they support our students. They are on multiple campuses throughout the week, and they are so actively involved. And they sent back a very nice email just saying thank you and how much they appreciate all that we as a board have done and appreciate the 4% raise that we voted on recently, so.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Yay, pre-K.
Are there any other trustee updates? I've got one, and I, as Chair of the Audit Committee, I've just been blown away by the professionalism of our staff and the fact that they're now really striving to get all of their certifications and adopt international internal audit standards, and really just setting a real, they're even adopting a charter for their organization to make sure they are operating at the highest standards for our district. And kind of on that note, there's been a lot of growth on the staff as well. Alexis Palacios and Emily Araditi have met the requirements and been approved for their Certified Construction Auditor License. Alexis Palacios has also completed her requirements and certified for her RTSBA through TASBO, and Charlie Smith has completed his requirements and certified for the CTSBO. So just a lot of growth in that organization over just the last year, and it's been amazing to see the work product that they produce for us and making sure that we're helping look for those operational efficiencies and staying in compliance and minimize our risk to our taxpayer dollars. So thank you to them. Anything else? It is 8:35. This meeting's adjourned.